I'd like to call the meeting to order. Wendy, if you'd call the roll, please.
Paul Banks.
Here.
Pam Howard.
Here.
Lori Visder-Ward.
Here.
Barbara Cruz.
Here.
Dave Levy.
Here.
Mark Sutter.
Here.
Jeff Swante.
Here.
Thank you. Jeff, if you would mind lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Pam, if you would read the mission statement, please.
Absolutely. The Thompson School District will be a district that empowers challenges and inspires students, faculty, staff, parents, school leaders, and community members to learn, achieve, and excel.
Thank you. The first item on the agenda is item 2.1, Adoption of the Agenda for March 21st. Is there a motion to adopt the agenda?
So moved.
And a second?
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to adopt the agenda as presented. Are there any changes or discussion? Hearing none. Wendy, if you'd call the roll, please.
Paul Banks.
Aye.
Pam Howard.
Aye.
Lori Visder-Ward.
Aye.
Barbara Cruz.
Aye.
Dave Levy.
Aye.
Mark Sutter.
Aye.
Jeff Swante.
Aye.
Thank you. The agenda is unanimously adopted. Next up is 3.1, Approval of Minutes from March 7th, 2018. I will entertain a motion to approve those minutes. So moved.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to approve the minutes from March 7th, 2018. Is there any corrections or changes? Hearing none. Wendy, if you'd call the roll, please.
Paul Banks.
Aye.
Pam Howard.
Aye.
Lori Visder-Ward.
Aye.
Barbara Cruz.
Aye.
Dave Levy.
Aye.
Mark Sutter.
Aye.
Jeff Swante.
Aye.
Thank you. And those minutes are unanimously approved. Public participation portion of the meeting, item 4.1, Superintendent's Report. Dr. Shear.
I do not have anything to report tonight.
Thank you. Takes us to item 4.2, Board Committee Reports. I will start with Mark down to my left and move this way. Sorry, Mark.
All right. Okay.
I'll give you a second.
So kind of going all the way back. I met with a couple principals in my district and we talked about some of the innovative things that they're doing at their schools. It's really exciting to see what kind of innovations we're doing in this district. We're seeing statewide recognition and national recognition for a lot of the programs that we're having. Very cool to talk to people about that. I also went to a Great Education Advocacy Summit and they covered two primary things. Number one, there's a debate item at the state level right now that was introduced. It's called the Superintendent Finance Formula. And so we got acquainted with that. Basically, it helps to try and modernize the Colorado financing formula for schools. The second thing that we learned about was a ballot item that's currently collecting signatures and might be on the ballot in November. And it's designed to help increase school funding at the state level. I also went to an Educator Appreciation Breakfast and that was always a lot of fun. You get together in a big room with a bunch of teachers, you know it's going to be a lot of fun. Beats Rants fundraiser for Walt Clark. I love the fact that our local communities and the businesses get behind our schools and help them raise funds for us. And we also participated, the entire board, I believe, participated in Kids Pack. And what a wonderful program that our community has. That's all I've got.
Thank you. Paul?
No report.
Early Childhood, the PIE group, has set up to have their Head Start Audit next week. So there'll be a lot going on next week during that time, interviewing a lot of the teachers as well as some of us as well. And then also, when they had their meeting this past week, they did self-assessment. So many of the staff members presented how they were doing a self-assessment of the program and what direction they need to go in it. It was interesting. And then I also attended the Thompson Education Foundation Breakfast.
Thanks, Barb. Pam?
Yep, I have two committee reports that I'm going to focus on. The first one is from CASB. That's the Colorado Association of School Boards. Right now CASB and CASE, the Colorado Association of School Executives, and a whole host of other groups are supporting Colorado House Bill 1232. It's currently awaiting hearing by the House Education Committee. This is a very important education bill, probably the most important one to come through the legislature this session. So if you're interested in looking that up, it's HB, House Bill 1232. I'm sure our legislators would love to hear from our community members and our educators in order to support that. It seeks to create a new public school funding distribution formula for pre-K through secondary through K, pre-K through 12, sorry. And the last time this formula was updated was 1994. So as you can imagine, this is a long time coming. So keep your eye on House Bill 1232. So that's from CASB. And then from the Thompson Education Foundation Board, there, first of all, you've heard about the Educator Appreciation Breakfast that was held and they would like me to announce those winners in case you didn't see that. So the Thompson School District Staff Member of the Year was Diana Richard. She's a gifted and talented teacher at Big Thompson Elementary School. The other TSD Staff Member of the Year, excuse me, is Rachael Salis, ILC teacher at Cottonwood Plains Elementary School. And then the Secondary Teacher of the Year is Karen Barrett, Social Studies teacher at Berthold High School. The Elementary Teacher of the Year was Nita Starr. She's a fourth grade teacher at Ivy Stockwell Elementary School. And then the Principal of the Year was Jason Germain over at Ferguson High School. And then finally, kind of the overall, the big winner, the Thompson Education Foundation Educator of the Year was Sabrina Opila. She's a fifth grade teacher at Monroe Elementary School. So congratulations to all those educators who received those awards at the breakfast. And then finally, for TEF, they would like me to talk about the upcoming Loveland Classic. It's a 5K, 10K, walk, run, whatever you want to do, jog, yog. There is also a kids' one-mile race. This is raising money for our early childhood kiddos in our district. It happens on April 21st, which is Saturday, 9:00 AM, out at the lakes at Centerra. There is, all the information is on the Thompson Education Foundation website. And it's, I think it's been run for 40 years now. It's a really, it's a classic. That's why they call it a classic. So if you want to come out and support the kids of Thompson, that's the 21st at 9:00 AM at the Centerra. Thanks.
Jeff?
Nothing to report.
And Dave?
The MPC's making a presentation and so I'll defer to them. Thank you.
All right. And I have nothing, I have lots of other things for later, but nothing for right now. So that concludes that. Next up is public comments. Wendy, do we have anyone sign up for public comment? Not tonight, okay? Action Consent Agenda, item five, we will take all three of these items together unless anybody wants to pull anything off for discussion. Item 5.1, Approval of Gifts and Donations. 5.2, Approval of Personnel, Extra Duty, and Coaching Recommendations. And item 5.3, JIC, which is the Joint Insurance Committee Insurance Renewal. So first question is, does anybody want to take anything off of there? Okay. And then the second question is, do I have a motion to approve?
So moved.
And is there a second?
Second.
And Pam, if you would read the gifts and donations before we take a vote?
We had three gifts this month and really amazing amounts of these donations. Ryan and Beth Wood donated $41,000 to Cottonwood Plains Elementary School to get the gym floor renovated. So that's massive. So thank you to Ryan and Beth Wood. And then another huge donation, $30,000 for CTE, Career Technical Education, at all of our high schools, was donated by Christian Borderwick. And he is with the Bank of Colorado. So that 30,000 donation, it's over three years. It'll go to our career and technical education programs throughout the high schools. So that's also a huge donation. So thank you to Christian Borderwick. And then finally, we had a $6,000 scholarship fund made by Mary Jane Marshall to Berthold High School. So it will be called the Mark Marshall Scholarship Fund. So a new scholarship for Berthold. So those are the three. Thanks to everybody.
Thank you. So it's been moved and seconded.
Madam President, should we have a policy at a certain amount of donation, we give a standing ovation?
Feel free to stand.
Okay.
So we have a motion and a second to approve the action consent items. No one's asked to pull anything off. And Wendy, if you would go ahead and call the roll.
Paul Banks.
Aye.
Pam Howard.
Aye.
Lori Visder-Ward.
Aye.
Barbara Cruz.
Aye.
Dave Levy.
Aye.
Mark Sutter.
Aye.
Jeff Swante.
Aye.
Thank you. So those items are approved, seven to zero. Next up is Discussion Item 6.1, Recognition of State Award Winning Schools, which are Big Thompson Elementary, Coyote Ridge Elementary, Berthold Elementary, and Ivy Stockwell. Is that Dr. Crespo or Dr. Shear? Who's got that? Both of you, all three of you? Dr. Crespo and Wendy, okay.
Actually, I thought Dr. Shear was coming, but I'll just stand here. Margaret Crespo, Chief Academic Officer. I'm like, and I'm still standing here. I'm here tonight to share in some huge celebrations. So if I could have those principal and staff come on up and we'll go through, and we'll go through these awards. So we'll start with the John Irwin School of Excellence Award. And we would like to invite Ivy Stockwell Elementary School up here. This is an incredible award provided by the state, top level, and we are very excited for their great work around assessment and all of their work that they do every single day in their STEM work and great students and families. So thank you. And I'm sure Dr. Shear has something to say.
First of all, just congratulations. Would anybody like to describe for the audience and the board how or why this award was provided to you all? Can you think of why that happened? Anybody want to step up? Come on up. No, they're going to make you. Good. I think it's worth them hearing this. Good.
At Ivy Stockwell, we've been working really, really hard to implement a rigorous STEM program for our kiddos. And our work is showing and paying off. And last year, our kiddos in English Language Arts in third, fourth, and fifth grade were 10th in the state overall for our growth in literacy. So super exciting for us that we're moving in the right direction with our kiddos.
Absolutely. Congratulations. And we have a certificate for you all. [applause]
I got to take the photo.
I just had a quick question for one of the staff members. I'm wondering, do you guys still have any room on your gym wall to fit any more of those? Because it seems like it's pretty packed with those.
They're making their way up the hallway.
Yeah, there's a lot of them.
Okay, you're going to let me do it, huh? All right. Actually, I was trying to put her on the spot and watch her dance. Did a nice job. The next one is Berthold Elementary School. Come on up. Keep doing it, good night. Come on around this side, you bet. Berthold Elementary School actually is not a stranger to this award. They've had the opportunity for this award in the past. It's the John Irwin School of Excellence Award. And these awards are presented certainly because of academic achievement and all that goes with it. And all you have to do is visit the school to know that good things are going on over there. And certainly, it's demonstrated through the data that defines very much the hard work that goes on on behalf of that staff and certainly your administration over the leadership. So congratulations to you. And Robert, I won't put you on the spot today, okay? Okay. Got picture. Go on the side. [inaudible] Coyote Ridge Elementary School, let's have them come up. Tonight, they actually received two awards. They receive an award for the John Irwin School of Excellence Award, again, for achievement and performance. And they also, the Governor's Distinguished Improvement Award, which shows a lot of growth in terms of what they were doing and making comparisons in data. And certainly, they were able to demonstrate that and doing some really outstanding things. John, would you like to say anything at all? Come on up here and talk. Tell them about what you're doing that makes a difference, okay?
So, thank you for the recognition. I appreciate the honor. What we're doing is, you know, a lot of hard work, obviously, but more importantly, we're trying to be purposeful in our planning with regard to growth. You know, growth is the focus, for sure, because if you're making the growth, thank you, if you're making the growth, then the achievement will follow. And so we're trying to, we're being very collaborative and very mindful with regard to how we're grouping students. We have a good systems in place to check in on student data on a six-week model. Every six weeks, we're meeting with every grade-level team. That's not just us, by the way. There's a lot of schools that are using this. But with regard to what we're doing, it's certainly a combination of, you know, of excellent educators working really hard, a parent community that supports us, and then purposeful planning and execution, and some good luck.
Great. Thank you very much. Congratulations. Thank you. [applause] Big Thompson Elementary School. Does anybody hear from Big Thompson? Come on up, you guys.
They were sneaking in the back there.
Coming in the back. Okay. All right. Do it louder. All right. Big Thompson Elementary School is receiving an award for the Governor's Distinguished Improvement Award again, as well as the John Irwin School of Excellence Award, and for the same kinds of reasons. And I would say that what they're modeling up is what we're doing all across the district right now. And all of our schools have these performance expectations that we've taken very seriously. I certainly want to give a lot of credit to the leadership in the buildings, but certainly the teachers who have been involved in this process, because without that, these things wouldn't happen. And I don't want this to do this. Let's see. We are getting feedback like crazy and it's, I don't have a metal plate in my head, even though some people think I do. But Big T, we are proud of you all and we're proud of this principal who just got here.
It's honestly because of the staff that I have standing behind me, the community that I have that totally supports us as a school. And there's some programs that we put in place that have, you know, boosted, have been able to boost what we are able to do with the kids and how successful they've been able to be, such as we do a mine time, which is an intervention time for, sorry, I'm out of breath, an intervention time that we have for our primary to make sure that those foundational skills are in place and then build from there. Sorry.
Again, congratulations to all of them. This truly is an example of why it's so important to have strong leadership in the buildings and also response to that with a staff that really, really cares and is working hard. Six years ago, when I came here, I remember talking to Sarah. We had her halftime as a building principal and halftime doing some other things.
Yeah.
And you think she's out of breath now? You should have heard her then. Anyway, I'm so proud of what you all have been doing and mostly because these awards represent some really good stuff that's happening on behalf of students. So we're very proud of you and also excited about the impact it's having on our students. So thank you very much. [applause]
In front of us is great. Now act like you like each other.
You're giving bunny ears. Congratulations.
Congratulations, guys. Good job.
Thank you. Madam President, that completes our recognition of these schools and their performance.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And congratulations to those four schools again. Good work. Item 6.2, Master Plan Committee Update. Dr. Crespo?
Good evening, Madam President, members of the board. Dr. Shear, Margaret Crespo, Chief Academic Officer. I am here for an update. We are very excited. We had our last school initial forum last evening. At Irwin, we had probably 80 people, if not more. It's our largest feeder model. We had great feedback. We had a total of nine tables and did a lot of discussion. It was really exciting to hear some of their ideas and some of the things that they're interested in doing as a community. We added more names to our champion list. We have continued to follow up our email group to our champions and we sent out our first invitation to our series of community forums that are coming up next week. You should be receiving those in the mail. We're very excited about that opportunity to meet with our community. We got feedback from groups on how to set up those meetings. So those will be happening starting next week, three days in a row. We will then come back to our school feeder systems the following week, week and a half, to do some closure and follow up with them, as well as have already scheduled some dates for April to follow up with the three community groups we'll be meeting with next week. We've had some clubs and organizations locally reach out to have MPC come and present what's going on in MPC and what that looks like around those three topic areas we talked about, enrollment capacity, community outreach, and backlog maintenance, maintenance backlog? Still working on that one? And really have had some great feedback and some information that has helped us change kind of how we're approaching what we're doing. We have our next, we've had two training dates. So yesterday and tomorrow evening, we'll have training dates for our MPC members to be prepared for the community forums next week. We've had a great turnout. Lots of people very interested in being trained on what we want to do and what we're looking for with the community forum. One of the key factors is that we're really listening and looking for value. We want to hear what our community wants. And that's sometimes tough when you have a lot of information and you just want to share everything you have. So we've definitely done some training around listening skills and what does that look like, and really not answering questions, just asking people to continue to write down their ideas so that we can keep that flow going. So very much appreciate MPC members who have been available both for the school meetings, the community meetings, and the trainings. We'll have our MPC meeting for April coming up here shortly, April 2nd. And then moving towards our final presentation for the board. Very excited about that in the multiple areas, multiple topics. And it'll be a comprehensive answer to the two charges, as well as feedback that we've heard from our community. Questions?
And you might have said this, I was trying to pull it up on my phone, but did you say when those community meetings were?
I did not. April, no, next week, Tuesday, Wednesday, Thursday, 12 to 1 at Crossroads. Berthold is first, so Grace Church, Crossroads, and Loveland Police Institute, Thursday. So in that order, Tuesday, Wednesday, Thursday.
During the day, did you say?
Yes. We very strategically, so thank you for saying during the day. We very strategically picked around the lunchtime hour. The community that we're looking to reach are typically not working during that time or if they are, can take some time off during lunch to come up and stop in and give some feedback. So we've been strategic about where we place the meetings so that we have the most possibility of people attending.
And then will the format be roughly the same?
Very similar format.
Okay. Anybody else, board, questions?
All right, thank you.
Thank you. Looking forward to hearing back. Item 6.3, Audit Advisory Committee Formation Review. Gordon Jones.
Madam President, Dr. Shear, members of the board, I'm Gordon Jones, Chief Financial Officer for the district. The board had expressed an interest in the past of forming by policy an audit advisory committee. That's the draft document that you see in front of me. It is in Legals' hands right now for their review, but I have had a couple discussions with the attorney and I don't see any issues with them. There will be some minor adjustments to this from their review, but it shouldn't be anything major. This is tailored after what was my impression of what the board was looking for, as well as consulting the audit committee policies that numerous other districts in the state have. It's a compilation of all that work. And certainly Kaplan and Ernest, our attorneys, are well-versed in that and will be adding their, any revisions that they might have. But this is the draft for the board's consideration and questions.
So Dave, this was something that you brought forward. Would you like to maybe just kind of maybe summarize?
Sure.
The high points in there and like the makeup, that kind of thing?
Well, sure. I appreciate that. Thank you very much. First of all, thank you, Gordon, for the expansion of what I originally wrote, I think is a very, very good document. The idea here, Ms. President, is that we are a very large component of the state government education. And we feel it would be very advisable if there would be a community review of the audit to offer the community opportunity to review the audit and to make the public at large understand how diligent the district is in performing its fiscal responsibilities. The committee would be made up of one member, seven members, plus two non-voting members, which would be the board treasurer, which would be myself, and the chief financial officer, which would be Gordon. And each board member would select or nominate one candidate. We would meet about four times a year. The first meeting would be devoted to reviewing or explaining school financing and some explanation of the budget. And after that, we would meet with the auditors before they perform their audit. They would explain how they're doing it. Anybody on the committee who wants to offer any advice or recommendations, that's the form that would be presented. And then they would review the audit and again, meet with the auditor, the independent auditor, to see their findings. And then the committee, and again, without votes by Gordon or myself, would provide their review and any recommendations they have to the board. And in this manner, we feel the community at large will have a voice in reviewing the expenditures and efficiencies of the district. That's the general purpose of us all.
Great, thank you. Does anybody have any questions? Either for Dave or for Gordon? You have a question for Gordon?
It was originally intended that we wouldn't meet until next September, probably. But I am thinking, and I had a little discussion with our superintendent, it may be advisable, since we are going to discuss a budget with some, and probably with some budget cuts, as we all know are necessary, that it might be a good idea to meet just one time this year to explain school financing, et cetera. So if we decide to go forward with that, and that would be the board's decision, I would just ask each board member to consider who they would like to recommend or nominate for that position. And so that maybe, so if we do decide to do that, we're ready to roll. We'd have to go through that. That's what I asked them.
So that was going to be one of my questions, then, is the timing. And I don't have a concern necessarily. When is the initial timing with the auditor? The auditor part, when does that come in?
Sure. The auditor will do their preliminary work typically in June.
Okay.
They're here, so if we had a committee in place by mid-May...
And each board member would select or nominate one candidate. We would meet about four times a year. The first meeting would be devoted to reviewing or explaining school financing and some explanation of the budget. And after that, we would meet with the auditors before they perform their audit. They would explain how they're doing it. Anybody on the committee who wants to offer any advice or recommendations, that's the forum that would be presented. And then they would review the audit, and again, meet with the auditor, the independent auditor, to see their findings. And then the committee, and again, without votes by Gordon or myself, would provide their review and any recommendations they have to the board. And in this manner, we feel the community at large will have a voice in reviewing the expenditures and efficiencies of the district. That's the general purpose of us all.
Great, thank you. Does anybody have any questions? Either for Dave or for Gordon? You have a question for Gordon?
Yeah. It was originally intended that we wouldn't meet until next September, probably, but I am thinking, and I had a little discussion with our superintendent, it may be advisable, since we are going to discuss a budget with some, and probably with some budget cuts, as we all know are necessary, that it might be a good idea to meet just one time this year to explain school financing, et cetera. So if we decide to go forward with that, and that would be the board's decision, I would just ask each board member to consider who they would like to recommend or nominate for that position. And so that maybe, so if we do decide to do that, we're ready to roll. We'd have to go through that. That's what I asked.
So that was going to be one of my questions, then, is the timing, and I don't have a concern necessarily. When is the initial timing with the auditor? The auditor part, when does that come in?
Sure. The auditor will do their preliminary work typically in June.
Okay.
They're here, so if we had a committee in place by mid-May, that would be sufficient time to have a pre-meeting or a kickoff meeting, just with some, a presentation, I would assume, by myself and Mr. Levy on school finance, the way the state formula works, the school, the state funding, how that relates to local property taxes, a variety of different matters, the budgeting process, all those things. And then it would give the auditor the opportunity to be in front of this group, for the group, the audit advisory committee, to ask them questions on how they are structuring their audit, how they do their sampling, what their threshold, margin of error is, materiality level. Each year, we have to go through what's called a single audit, which is an audit of one of the grant funds that we have from a federal or state level. So they, each year, that's on a rotating basis, so the auditor could provide information on that, a variety of information that could take place before that June kickoff work or June field work begins by the auditor.
Well, then that definitely makes sense to get it on the ground before, obviously before the auditor starts the audit. And then I think my second question was going to be, is are we ready to start putting names forward? But it sounds like that's what you just said, that you want us to go ahead and do that.
I think, as Gordon said, it should go through a legal review, and the board should adopt the final, you know, any changes and adopt it. But I think we all could start talking to people in the community who we want and make sure they're willing to volunteer for it.
Would the members that we nominate come from our district? Is that the intention, or does that not matter?
I leave it to the, each individual, you know, the way it's written, it just said each board member will nominate one individual. So I just don't think that's, I just think it should be within the district, though.
Yeah, within the school.
Within our school district, but not necessarily within our.
And it specifies a non-district employee, so.
Yeah.
Okay. Anybody who lives within the district boundaries, but is not employed by the school district, basically.
Right. And I would suggest, I certainly don't want to dictate this, but I would suggest it should be somebody with financial background, so they understand what audits do, what they don't do. This shouldn't be, you know, it should be somebody with financial proficiency.
Question one of the bullet, and I know these are written pretty broadly to probably capture many things, but I was reading the bullet review and make recommendations regarding other financial matters as tasked by the board. Are there any ideas of particularly why that was in there, or is it just kind of a catch-all? Or what type of things are you envisioning maybe we'd be?
Not yet at this time.
Okay.
I just think, it's just like you said, it just provides that opportunity, but I don't foresee that. Maybe the board, other board members do, but I don't foresee that at this time.
Anything you can think of, Gordon, that would?
I would liken it to a charge given to the master planning committee. There could be a charge given to the audit advisory committee to research a particular expenditure or have a better understanding of what property taxes are estimated to be in the coming three years in the district. It could be a variety of things. No specific topic in mind. It just gives the board the ability to direct the work of the committee.
Dr. Shear?
Just a statement. I think it's important that, first of all, this audit committee concept is not new to Thompson. It's in other places. I also think it's important, and I certainly embrace it. Given the questions that regularly seem to come up in this community regarding finances and all that go with it, I personally welcome this. Another level of accountability, so that there is no question about the integrity of the system, the things that we're doing. And I think it's timely, as just an additional way for us to be as transparent as we possibly can be. I think it's, I'm very proud of the last six years of audit reports that we've had since I've been here, with both when Steve was working and then Gordon taking over and making sure we had the same thing going on. But adding this feature, I think, is just another opportunity to send a signal to the community that we're certainly wanting to make sure that there's no doubt in anybody's mind that this $185 million of total budget that we have with all of our different funds are being taken care of very, very comfortably and with great care. And this is just another validation of that.
Any further questions? So Gordon and board, maybe you guys can all chime in. Do you see this, then, as the first reading of this policy? Or do we want to wait until we have a stamp from the attorney? And have two more votes?
The conversations that I've had with the attorney via email, I don't anticipate major changes in this, and certainly if the board wanted to take it under consideration for adoption at the next meeting, I could certainly show the redline version from this, which is clearly marked as a draft, to the redline version that the attorneys would come back with. So it would be very apparent of what any changes that there were. If the board would rather see that version first before, and then be able to consider that before considering it for adoption as policy, that's really the board's discretion.
I don't know, go ahead.
I feel fine being ready to approve it at next meeting. If something surprising comes up, we can always table it and do it, but.
Yeah, we've been talking about it, I think enough that it's.
Yeah. And they've already seen a version, or the attorneys have already seen a version of it, correct?
They have this exact version. They've crafted many versions of their own for various districts as well, which have, this version has many of those key points.
So that's what we'll do, then. We'll bring it back for action. Excuse me, next meeting. Wendy, if you would make a note of that, please. Any other questions for Gordon or commentary about this? So your homework, then, is to nominate, find a community member to nominate, to membership on this, on this committee. And hopefully, we won't all find the same person. We'll find six, seven, seven different people. All right, thanks, Gordon. Next up is superintendent search update. And Dr. Severs, you want to go ahead and, you want to go ahead and introduce?
Madam President, School Board, Dr. Shear. This is Bill Severs, Chief Human Resources Officer of this amazing district. At this time, I'd like to turn it over for Mrs. Vista Ward to make the announcement.
Thank you. So as you may or may not be aware, the board met yesterday for about three and a half hours, reviewing several candidates for the superintendent position. We had 52 applications completed. We met with the search firm, or the two representatives from the search firm of McPherson and Jacobson, McPherson and Jacobson. And they came from, I believe, 21 states. Am I right there? I think 21 states, plus Colorado. So we had a real good, real good pool of applicants to choose from. And I'm just going to basically read from the press release that we're releasing, so I make sure I cover all the points, and then you can hear the four finalists that we're putting forward. The Thompson School District Board of Education is pleased to announce that it has selected four candidates to interview for the district's superintendent position, which will be vacated by Dr. Stan Shear when he retires from the district on June 30th. The candidates selected for the interviews are, and these are in no particular order, Dr. Kimberly Huff from Ashburn, Virginia, Dr. Mark Schaefer from Boulder, Colorado, Mr. Tony Gerardo from Grand Junction, Colorado, and Mr. Daniel Snowberger from Durango, Colorado. Interviews are scheduled to be conducted the week of March 26th. Numerous stakeholder groups have been selected to interview the final candidates and submit input to the board about each of them. Per state statute, the board will not be making a final decision until at least 14 days has elapsed from the announcement of the finalists. Thompson School District retained the services of McPherson and Jacobson LLC to assist in conducting their search. The consultants viewed, screened, and conducted extensive background checks on 52 applicants. On March 20th, the consultants presented the applicants to the Board of Education and provided them detailed background information on each applicant. So those are your four finalists for superintendent position. As I said, we'll be interviewing next week. Those are full-day interviews, Monday, Tuesday, Wednesday, and Thursday, one candidate each day. Those interviews are open. That schedule will be available on the website, probably.
So the interviews are open for that final interview from 7:00 to 9:00 p.m.?
7:00 to 9:00 p.m. And we will post that. Don't we have a section on there about superintendent search?
We do.
Can we make sure that that gets updated with that information? And just a little bit about what we did yesterday, and board, you all can chime in afterwards, but we had printed materials. We had resumes and applications, answers to essay questions from all the candidates. But what we did yesterday, last night mainly, was we had video interviews, where each of the, each of the seven candidates had answered the same three questions. And it was hugely valuable to me, and I think the others will agree, to see the candidates on film, to actually, it's almost like meeting them. I mean, you can't obviously pull everybody in from all over the country, but it was almost just as good. So that was really a powerful and useful tool is to see them by video. Anybody else have anything they want to add? So we're ready for a lot of work next week, a long, a long week of interviewing candidates. Dr. Shear, I'm looking at you, Bill. Dr. Severs, is there anything else that you want to add to?
Yeah, just going from the idea, when I welcomed the candidates at 8:00.
Oh, yes.
You had mentioned that, you know, it'd be a neat idea to have one of the board members there each day.
Yes, so the meeting at 8:00 happens here, correct?
Correct.
Every morning? And we didn't talk about this yesterday, but I thought it would be a nice idea if there were a board member there just to say hello. Basically, shake the hand, say hello, welcome to Colorado, welcome to Thompson School District. No further, you know, obligations after that. 10 minutes promptly at, 10 minutes to 8:00.
Yes.
Because Dr. Severs has told me he's a stickler for punctuality. So I would like to leave that open to you. If you want to let, you know, if four of you want to come forward, I'm not going to do it, but if any of you all want to do it, or even if two of you want to do it on a day.
So max would be two, two on each day.
Yep. So just let him know what day you want to do before we leave tonight, if you're interested in doing that. Will that work, Bill?
Yes.
Okay. Good deal? All right. Yeah. I thought it would be warmer, yeah, than just, here's the staff, here you go. Okay. Final item on tonight's agenda is negotiations update.
Hello again, board. So I have a handout for you. I believe the negotiation notes were sent to you, so I'll give you a copy real quick. So the notes you have in front of you is a session that happened on March 8th. We had the opportunity for negotiations all day today, from 8:00 to about 3:00 o'clock. So we don't have the notes available from today's conversation, but I just want to highlight a couple things that came out. Currently, we have four critical questions that we're discussing. The first question, how do we help our staff prioritize their limited time to flexibly meet the needs of our students? So we're 99% of the way there. We're finalizing wording. That would go in the MOU, so we're close to that. We just have a couple other things to discuss. So just to highlight before I go over the other questions, our next negotiation meeting is the thing that we did, we scheduled back-to-back days. So our next meetings are April 12th and April 13th. According to the conversations we had today, it looks like, most likely, we'll be wrapping up negotiations on the 12th and then finalizing some things possibly on the 13th. The next board meeting that we would have discussion around that is April 18th. So I'll present all the items to you on April 18th. And then if needed, we can go back to negotiations on April 27th and May 3rd. So that gives you some times, you know, as we discuss, that you don't have to make a final decision right then and there. It gives you an opportunity to process that, and we can follow up at the previous or the next board meeting if needed. So the other thing that we've been discussing is what changes need to be made in the MOU to better serve our district. And the highlight I just want to discuss of the conversation that we had today was, there's an item there about negotiation schedules and procedures, and what we're looking at right now is putting wording together to move to a two-year negotiation cycle. So I'll get into more details about that, but I just want to give you a highlight of the conversations we had today about that. And then we had talked about emergency staffing needs for ESS students. Yeah, I'll talk more about that on April 18th. And then there are other questions that we'll finish discussions around. We haven't started the one question, how do we ensure that students and staff have a healthy environment to learn and teach? So we'll have a discussion at that on April 12th. And then question three, how do we maintain the current movement of focusing on district salaries and benefits on April 12th as well? And then we have Gordon Jones invited to that meeting, so he can kind of give an update of where the state's budget is for us to make a better decision moving forward on what, how we can propose a solution to that. Are there any questions?
Questions, board? I have one around the two-year cycle. So would that be for, explain the timing of that. Would that be this?
Yeah, so there's, there's two districts that we know of that negotiate a two-year cycle. And basically, what that would be is, so if we end negotiations this year, so moving into a two-year cycle, so next year, what we would do is, every year, it's still talking about the compensation part. So two, two plus two would do work around that, you know, small things about the MOU cleanup. And then the second year would be a full negotiations, like we do now, where we discuss the whole MOU and then talk about topics and critical questions there. So it doesn't mean that we'll walk away from negotiations and not talk again. It's set up that you would meet every year, but not the whole group would meet. So you'd meet, you know, every other year as a whole group, and then two plus two would be doing the work around negotiations there.
So if that goes forward, then next year would be that every other year where the only meeting would be around compensation?
So there'd be no large group. The other conversation would be small MOU cleanup, because when you look at the MOU, it talks about yearly dates. So then there are things that would expire in there when you're talking about 2018, and then you'd have to move it to 2019, 2020.
Any other questions, board? No? All right. We're going to get out of here in record time, guys. There's some written reports attached. Item 7.1 is the calendar of events for April, and 7.2 is the monthly financial report for February. There's really no budget update, budget development update this month, because there's really nothing to update, is my understanding, correct? Okay. So those two reports are attached. Does anybody have any questions on those while we're here?
Just for the, oh, sorry.
Go ahead.
Oh, I was going to say, just for the events, the, I stopped by Artworks and watched the Bill Reed Middle School students doing their photo project, and that's going to be up at Artworks. And I'm looking at, it looks like April 2nd, 5:30 to 7:30 p.m. That opens at Loveland Art Works, downtown Loveland. So if you want to see some of our students' work, that is a pretty great opportunity.
I think that's the night they present, but it's open starting on the 26th, I think.
Okay.
On display, is right, I think.
All right, thank you. And future agenda items and requests for information. So reminder that we are meeting tomorrow in study session from 4:00, I believe, to 7:00, correct? Is that?
Which room?
Wendy, which room do we have for that tomorrow? So 132 in here tomorrow. The agenda's out. There's basically two items on the agenda. I've invited David Firth to help sort of lead us through some discussion around focusing on, focusing our goals, focusing on our board goals, and how we're going to continue to develop clarity and direction in our work together as a board, how we can come together a little bit. I know you guys have seen me bring forward the focus areas, and we've talked a little bit about kind of condensing those down. So David's going to start leading us in that area, and then any other area around how we work together as a board. I think we've got him for an hour to an hour and a half, or as long as I can corral him there. And you guys all know, yeah, we, yeah, because it happened, I met him in November, so you all know him. He's out there tonight. And then the other thing on the agenda that Dr. Crespo will head up is, we're going to discuss, you guys requested this at the last meeting, a little bit more discussion around those, the school utilization policy and the school closure policy, which are, I don't have the letters in front of me, F.C. and F.C.A., and then the regulation, the workbook. We were calling it a workbook last time. So some discussion around that. Dr. Crespo will be there to help lead us through that. And those are the two main items, and then, you know, if time allows. items, and then, you know, if time allows, anything else that we want to discuss. And I don't believe I have anything hanging out from prior meetings that we haven't addressed, but if there is, let me know, I mean, go ahead and let us know, and we'll make sure we get it taken care of. With a reminder that April, our next meeting is April 4th, is in Berthoud.
In the library.
In the library, with the candlestick. No, that's a different game.
I know.
Sorry, that's a different game. So Berthoud High School in the library, April 4th, next meeting, and then we'll be back here April 18th for our regularly scheduled program.
And that's when we announce the new superintendent?
And that's when we will, I believe, be able to do that. That's correct. Okay. If I hear nothing else, I will adjourn us. Thank you.